To the public comment, unless, people have been waiting a long time. Are you guys both okay with that? I know you had your hand up.
I'm good.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Combs. So, we have a few cards. Pamela Marks, followed by Herb Dickerson, and Anita LaFollette.
Are you guys as tired as I am? Yes. Can I pass these out to you? My name is Pamela Marks, and I'm a resident over at Giffen Avenue. And I had this whole speech prepared for you this evening, but now having listened to all of this, it might just be a mute point. I want to congratulate you and applaud you for bringing in Mr. Ian DeJean. It seems like he's opened up the eyes of the council on a different way to really approach the problem of homelessness. I came here today to bitch, moan, and groan about the CHAP program. I actually put an amendment into play and submitted it to the sub-council on homelessness, and it fell on deaf ears, and nothing has been done. It was a simple amendment, because I felt at the time that the CHAP program wasn't taking it to the things that you hold dear, which I heard for four hours tonight about taking care of the safety of your community. And we feel that that's being compromised with the CHAP program, suggesting to put a homeless tent temporary encampment next to a grammar school. We almost could consider the idea ludicrous. But after hearing everything that you've said here, it seems like I'm not mistaken that the other thing that is coming up is that by putting that tent encampment there, we can almost expect to get zero results to the problem of the solution of homelessness. So this very well may be a mute point for me to ask the committee to please put my amendment in. I had submitted earlier that that amendment be a half a mile away from any grammar school or residence, and I listened very well to some very smart people who said, "Might not help you to do it at a half a mile." So you will see there, in my revised amendment, that for various different reasons, which we won't go into tonight because it's late, that it's a quarter mile, and that's to protect the children. Because I have over 100 people in one morning who called the school principal at R.L. Stevens School totally freaking out about the fact of this particular development right next to their children. They are primarily of Hispanic descent, and it was challenging to try to explain to them what was going on. I don't know how the process works for you guys to vote on this. If CHAP continues, if you don't pay attention to the gentleman that you hired, that I think is the guru of fixing homelessness, and CHAP still remains an entity in the program of what you are funding, I beg you to please protect the kids and put the amendment into CHAP. You did two other amendments just three weeks ago. Please encourage or vote on this and say yes. It is a crazy idea to put a homeless tent encampment right next to a grammar school. Can we vote on it tonight? Okay.
That's not on our agenda tonight. Herb Dickerson, followed by Anita, and then Leah Marks.
I put it in a car. I put it in a car.
It's in here.
Okay. All right.
Good evening. I too live over right by the school and the Methodist Church, as you all know by now. My name's Herb Dickerson. I too want to congratulate the council on attending this. I know that Tom attended, and I would assume several of you attended the conference. And it does sound like some really good ideas and good approaches have come out of it. It sounds like it supports a lot of our concerns, as in, one, the idea of a tent encampment is not something that's an actual solution to the issue. I myself and my wife are very familiar with the homeless situation. I won't go into why. But we know that it takes more than just supplying them a temporary spot in a field in a tent or without a long-term approach to the issue to help them get their issues resolved. We've been in contact, and we had a meeting last week with the Wright School Board and the superintendent. We had a large number of residents attend with their children, and there was great opposition. There was very little in support of having a tent, any type of a CHAP program, that close to a school. Their concerns were real. I don't think that, I've gotten to know a lot of these people around our community. It's been said that we're afraid of homeless. We don't know what they're like. We all do realize that there are homeless around our community now. We deal with them now. Our concern is setting up a situation that puts a potential increase close to a school area with the kids. We had several parents testify of actual experiences they've had with situations of homeless on the Methodist Church property a year ago. There was a situation where they were allowing a motorhome to stay on their property, and without going into great detail because of time, where they did experience, as they walked their daughters to school, they did experience issues with being, actually having stuff thrown at them, dealing with feces, that type of thing. So there were a lot of incidences that were brought up, that it actually happened, and our concern has always been an attraction that that would cause. But I do have to commend you for the conference. Sounds like his direction was, and if I was quoted, if I heard the quote right, homeless hasn't been solved by a tent or by a hut.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anita LaFollette, and Leah Marks.
I must apologize. I'm a little overwhelmed right now because I'm so exhausted. But I want to say a few things. First of all, I'm really disappointed that the CHAP programs haven't gone well so far, and that there's so much opposition to the one that we did have. But I did want to let you know that I applied myself, because there is a piece of property right next to the underpass there that is available, and I submitted that to the appropriate people at city. But I guess we'll find out about that later. And I did, in fact, go to the conference that we had a couple of weeks ago, and what I heard them say was that Housing First works best if you don't select out those people for other causes and let them all into the shelter, because it doesn't matter whether they're using drugs or what, they're all homeless. They all have no shelter. And the other thing I want to say is, yeah, I have a friend, and she's looking for a place to live, and I remembered that there was a large amount of money that was given to the council on aging, and there were nine housing vouchers in there, so we followed up on that. But we can't find it exactly. They sent us to another place in Human Services. We still don't know where that money is. And I'm a little bit discombobulated here, but that is true, that there is no funding, and that's very unfortunate, that, like you say, someone was in a home, and that the host program had no money to support them to stay in that home. And I know there was another program, I think it was CAP or something, that moved out to Stony Point, that used to help people stay in homes, and I guess that's been defunded also. So it seems to me like the first place you'd want to put the money is right there, so we can keep people in the homes that they have. And maybe you can also let me know how it is. We can find out where these HUD vouchers are going, because these people that I've made adult protective services reports on can't get them, even though that money was allocated especially for those elderly people who have adult protected, yeah, who are trying to live in their car. So thanks for your time on this, and I'm sorry I'm a little bit off-kilter here, but maybe we'll catch up next time. Thanks.
Thank you. Leah Marks.
She's not here.
Okay. Victoria, Victoria Yanyas.
I'm still here.
And then Kevin.
Yes, I'm very concerned about this proclamation because of the lack of effect that it has on the police treatment of the homeless. I've gone to the subcommittee meeting and asked that the police give a report at every meeting regarding what's going on with their interface with the homeless. The presentation that the gentleman gave this evening that showed the clean streets, that's because people are being made to move along. Whether it's under the cover of cleaning up or not, they sure did clean up. I have passed by, under the Ninth Street Bridge, on my way from the senior center to the living room in the morning, and I pass by Ninth Street, and I see the police there. Today I got off, the first time I stopped, the gentleman they were shaking down was our probation, so I stepped back. But this time, today, there was nothing happening like that. They were just talking to somebody, and he told me, "I'm just talking to my friend here." Well, a talk is something that's voluntary, not by force. If an officer has probable cause, then they can graduate to a stop and a detention before an arrest. But without that probable cause, this is basically discrimination based on income level or lack thereof, or economic status, just like we were thinking of adding to the previous resolution. So what I would like to know is, what effect does the homeless emergency declaration have on the police enforcement of laws that result in wiping the homeless off the streets? Where are they going? Now, we need to look at this more closely, because this is our resolution to homelessness right now. And I would like to see the city council do something that would, for example, make, get a summary report of all the citations that were given in the last couple of weeks, or since the homeless proclamation has been in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Springer.
One forgot to say that Officer Thompson harassed me today.
All right. Thank you. You can raise this up, I think, a little more.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Hello, everybody. Thanks for seeing me. As five of you know, I've spoken to five of you directly about the impact that the homeless in downtown has had on local businesses. It's been pretty detrimental. I had a meeting last Tuesday at Springer's Tap Room, my restaurant. We had 46 business owners or managers show up. We had 87 total people, who all want to get involved, want to help. I know I have reached out to Sonoma State about possibly starting an intern program to help with jobs training. This was great to hear Jenny Lind talk about all this stuff. I am in full support of what she does. You know, I can, I'm amazed at how many people want to help. I don't know how you guys can reach out to them. You guys have certainly a wider grasp than I do. However, I have found hundreds of people who want to reach out. I know many of you have seen some of my trains on Facebook. And some are not all that eloquent, but they, many want to really reach out and help. I don't know if we can start some sort of volunteer program. Obviously, the DAO, the Downtown Active Organization, that's what we spoke with, spoke about mostly. Hugh Futrell and a few other people spoke about the plan. I think it's fine, but it doesn't offer any long-term solutions. We do need short-term solutions as well. Of 46 business owners that I've spoken with, 41 are down 25 percent, 25 percent or more. My business is down 39 percent, 2016 to 2015. It's not an economic issue. As many of you have seen, I've had 1,000 comments on one of my Facebook posts. I had 918 on another, and I had 750 on another. These people do not want to come downtown and spend their money, because they are nervous. Do they have a right to be nervous? I do not believe so. I think we all can agree on that, that whether it's an immigrant, whether it's a citizen who, my family's, they were German immigrants, who were Jewish, and they feared for their lives, so they came. Whether they're an immigrant, whether they're homeless, whether it's just me, I don't, I don't really think it matters as far as their ability to, you know, hurt somebody or not. I think that's a bunch of hogwash. These people want to be, most of these people want to be part of society, and I hope, I know you guys already all know this, but if we can have some sort of outreach program to get volunteers from the community, that would be great. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. That's all the cards I have. Let's get a motion on the table. Mr. Schwedhelm, and then, first of all, are there any further questions for staff?
I kind of have a question for staff before I make a motion. What would be the consequences if we don't continue the declaration of a homeless emergency?
So I'll take a first pass at this and maybe defer to our city attorney. The advantage of a declaration of a homeless emergency is it allows the council, as a legislative body, to suspend some of your land use zoning actions. An example would be the CHAP program, where your current ordinances don't contemplate campgrounds in the city limit, so there was an opportunity to implement that immediately, rather than go through the planning commission and that vetting process. Another example was the Safe Parking Program under CHAP. And then there's the financial consideration. It allows the mayor and the city manager powers to expend money more quickly, expeditiously, without seeking budget approval from the full body. Those are the two main advantages of having a declaration.
And I would agree. I think Director Guine gave a very nice summary. The emergency declaration gives you flexibility, gives the city manager additional authorities. Thus far, we've used that flexibility. You have used that flexibility for the CHAP program, for the use of the Press Democrat Building for the SAY overnight shelter, for some allocations of money for different sources, I mean, for different purposes, sorry. That's how it's been used thus far, but that flexibility, there's nothing to prevent that flexibility to be used in a way that's perhaps more supportive of the Housing First approach. And I can't tell you, sitting here tonight, you know, what shape that would take. But again, if you, if you determine not to continue the declaration, you would, you would lose some of that flexibility. There may come a time when you feel you don't need that, but be aware that you would be giving up some of your abilities, both as a council and with the city manager as well.
So with those programs that I heard from both Director Guine and the city attorney, how many of those would be classified as Housing First? Because where I'm going with this, if we declare this as our strategy, Housing First, are we funding those efforts that are considered to be Housing First, not just the philosophy, but the intervention?
I guess, you know, one example is the money, the agenda item that will come to you next week, allocating $125,000 towards rapid rehousing. Again, I can't, sitting here tonight, tell you what the shape of other initiatives might be. Perhaps Director Guine?
I'm thinking that, for example, the SAY, Social Advocates for Use, winter shelter, space in the Press Democrat Building, I'd have to check in with our planning colleagues to see if that would be able to continue if the emergency were to sunset.
Is that considered a Housing First effort?
Not, not in the pure definition. No, it is not.
And go back to 125K. Absent a homeless emergency, how would that item that we haven't seen yet come to this body?
It could come to your, come to the council by a more standard budgetary allocation, so that that is not essentially tied to the declaration. Yeah, I'm at a little bit of a loss, sitting here, you know, tonight, to specifically say what are examples that would fall only under an emergency declaration, rather than, rather than being able to do that through other means. I do think the authority that the emergency declaration gives to the city manager to expend funds more quickly, more directly, to engage programs and so forth, I would want to look at that carefully before you gave it up.
Okay. And that may be where I leave to the next discussion, to have more of that. Because I guess what I'm trying to balance it out of, okay, council as a whole, we've said Housing First, and I know there's staff time and effort that it takes to present this very item once a month. And so balancing, is that the best use of your time? Or could you be working on some specific strategies of Housing First, instead of making a monthly presentation in preparation for council? So again, no direction, that's where my question is going. Thank you.
Certainly, and that's a policy decision, obviously, for the council.
Other questions? Mr. Tippett.
Yes, thank you. It would probably be helpful if we could get a breakdown of your time and the money that's going to these programs related to the homeless emergency. You know, I, for one, support taking a new tack, but I don't think going in a new direction should necessitate abandoning a lot of the progress that staff has made over the last year on some of these programs like CHAP. You know, yes, CHAP is not Housing First. CHAP is controversial, but I do see it as a place where people can go, that it's not in front of Mr. Springer's business. And I think that's another part of this, this has to be part of our discussion, is how are we helping the merchants downtown? And I kind of see programs like CHAP as being something that does help ameliorate that problem. So again, I do, I do want to express my support for moving forward. I think we should look at the homeless emergency, but I would be hesitant to abandon the homeless emergency just yet, given the fact that we're still in the winter. I think it's important that we support places like the SAY Shelter, whereas I understand it, they're full or near full, and it may be a more appropriate time to look at this closer to the spring, when the wet and cold weather is behind us. But again, I do want to emphasize my support for reallocating some staff resources, be it time and money, towards Housing First.
Other questions? Mr. Schwedhelm.
Thank you. I will make the motion or move the resolution of the council, the city of Santa Rosa, extending the proclamation of local homeless emergency, and wait for the reading of the text.
Second?
Thank you. Any comments? I, please.
I just want to reemphasize that, at least for council. We've passed what we said we wanted, our strategy, and it's Housing First. And I know it's tough when I go, could you put up slide six of eight, the five things we talked about last week? You know, I'm glad and I'm happy to see rapid rehousing on top, but the other four are not consistent with Housing First, and I know it's taking time and staff effort from a number of departments. And what I really have been struggling with is getting that laser focus of, no, let's end homelessness versus just managing it. So I just ask the rest of the council, I'm not prepared to say, you know, eliminate the homeless emergency now, but at least be thinking about it. What do we really want, what message do we want to send to the community prior to our next one? Because I really think, let's end it, not just manage it. Thanks.
Ms. Combs.
Thank you. I can't, I was trying to not respond until it came up again. I strongly support Housing First. I strongly support the concept that we need to have Housing First-oriented shelter, and that we move forward in that direction, as we have voted so to do. I learned a great deal from Ian DeJean and support the great majority of what he said. It is true that shelters, the CHAP program, tents, and huts do not solve housing. Only one thing solves housing, and that's, solves homelessness, and that's housing. Period. I completely support that we spend the bulk of our time and energy on housing. We have a Housing Action Plan, and I think that it ties in very nicely with the concept of Housing First. We also have 3,000 people who are pooping and peeing outside in the creeks and on property and living in an assortment of unhealthful ways. The goal, from my point of view, of our CHAP program and our homeless emergency, was in order to find spaces for folks to be safe until we got our act together. I hear that we're getting our act together, but I don't think it's there yet, and I hope that we aren't abandoning the concepts of providing people with safe places to sleep until they're in housing. And I know that I'm not talking about solving homelessness. I'm talking about making sure our residents are safe today. And there's a gap between today and having housing. My recollection, when we started this conversation, was that there were 30 percent of the people who were in the shelter were ready to move into housing. They had already been determined to be ready to move into housing, and they were living in the shelter, because they didn't have a place to go. We had a bottleneck in the shelters, so homeless people couldn't get into the shelter, because shelter people didn't have a place to go. Saying we're Housing First does not solve that bottleneck, and it doesn't get the people who are on the streets into housing. So I support Housing First. I want to see the Housing Action Plan moving forward, because I want to see creation of actual housing. But I do have some concerns about abandoning programs. It seems to me that it is not either do this or do that, that it is that we can move forward with temporaries, maintenance of folks in places where we want them to be. There are places we don't want them to be, we're certainly hearing that. Places where we want them to be where they're safe. We need to move that forward, plus do Housing First. And I am very unwilling to separate and say, we'll only do one or the other. And excuse me for being impassioned this late at night.
Vice Mayor Tippett, and then council member.
So this is a question for staff. Would it be helpful for you and your workload if we actually looked at some of these bullet points on page six and gave you direction tonight?
Yes, it would be very helpful if the council as a whole feels that your direction to staff is to seek shelter opportunities and move on the new discussion we've all experienced in the last week on Housing First.
Okay, so I'll just quickly voice my thoughts on this. Samuel L. Jones, I read in the staff report that three of the four portables are not available. National Guard Armory don't have a service provider to provide this for us. It costs us $43,000 a month. I personally believe when you've got an armory situation where people are just shown the door at 8:00 in the morning and told to come back at 5:00 at night, that that money can be better spent elsewhere in a housing. can be better spent elsewhere in a housing-first strategy. Veterans Memorial Building, county's not playing pool with us. I think we saw that coming. Former Fire Station Five, I think, is probably a worthy endeavor to continue exploring, but I would be willing to, you know, say that we shift Samuel L. Jones, National Guard, and veterans to, I mean, just to table that for now and pursue your time over on a housing-first strategy, diversion, rapid rehousing, things like that.
Mr. Rogers? And, and please weigh in on, on that last, the page up there also.
Right. I, I think, I think my opening comments sort of indicated that I was leaning in this direction, the same as Councilmember Schwedhelm, of willing to move this forward again as an emergency, which we know that it is, but also being willing to sort of shift our efforts in more alignment with the, the housing-first strategy. I would, for the most part, concur with Vice Mayor Tibbetts's assessment. My one concern is, and we, we do have neighbors here from the First United Methodist neighborhood, obviously, that if we are giving up some of our attempt to give people temporary shelter, that we're also still putting it on the neighborhood at the same time. So I would say if we are going to go in this direction tonight, I'd agree that the Armory is a waste of money for us at this point. The Veterans Memorial Building is not happening. So I would still leave Sam, the Sam Jones Hall homeless shelter expansion, even if it's only one of those units, because I do think it's important for us to at least show the neighborhood that there is a shared impact or that we would need to address that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Oliveras?
You want, you want to put on this first?
Yes.
I, I think it was pretty clear and obvious the way staff presented it. It's, it's that, it's that top with the rapid rehousing, and then what minimal we can do with, with Samuel Jones to keep that going for a while. But yes, I also believe what Jenny said earlier was that we have this big oil tanker that needs to be turned around, it's going to take some time. So we do need to explore what we are doing currently as, as far as policy, and is, is it a barrier to get that thing turned around and moving in the right direction? So it's, it's going to be, I guess, again, us looking at setting the appropriate policy to make that happen. And, and again, it reminds us that we are still students, that we're not the experts in, in ending homelessness. The experts are out there, and we need to collaborate with it and make it happen. So I look forward to helping to turn that tanker and make it work, and if it means that we need to, we look at what barriers the homeless emergency declaration causes us, we need to look at that. I'm going to say we need to change it, we need to look at that and see if there are barriers there. And if there are, then we need to eliminate those and, and start moving in the direction of ending homelessness.
Thank you. Mr. Swire?
Thank you, Mayor. I concur with Councilmember Oliveras and other comments. I want to move in the direction of doing what works and not just what feels good today. So the, any investments that we make in the Samuel Jones Hall, I would hope would be in, I would prefer to go to service provision as opposed to, our human beings, working with those that are there as opposed to expanding a, a delayed effort in trying to make, in trying to house people. So Councilmember Oliveras mentioned, I think it's just kind of whatever's necessary, what, what would be necessary right now as far as spending at Samuel Jones? Or is there anything that is necessary?
Yeah, yeah, and I think I heard that, that there's a caseload issue that needs to be fixed. I think that's a big piece of it. So it's, it's not a matter of, is it, do we make it bigger? Or does that just increase the caseload? Again, it's how quickly can we start addressing some of the individual issues and putting people into housing? Because I'm hearing success stories of people going into housing. So what's the barrier of keeping us from speeding that up and making that, and getting more people into housing faster?
Yeah, I'm, I'm more interested in getting some success stories as opposed to warehousing people. So I, I'm, I'm looking at very practical and reasonable and proven ways of spending our money.
Ms. Combs, do you want to weigh in on these five points?
I'm a big fan of rapid rehousing. I am concerned, I'm interested that we have approved a method for moving faster on spending money and resources with the city manager and the mayor, and yet don't seem to be using that particular piece. I would like to see us use that piece, and I'd like to have you all come back and say, we're asking for the city manager and the mayor to expedite some spending on certain things, including diversion and rapid rehousing, because it seems to me, if we've said it's an emergency and we have a facility to move forward with spending, why aren't we using that? Why are, why are we hearing about rapid rehousing week after week without actually doing the expenditure? I understand that we're giving up on National Guard Armory and the Veterans Memorial Building at this time. I'm not sure if I would pursue the former Fire Station Five or not, or if I would want those resources to go into housing directly. So, but I also feel pretty strongly that we need to talk about a bigger pie for this and not talk about either or so much.
Mr. Schwedhelm, your thoughts on this slide?
I think earlier you get just the top one, because any other sources, either financial or efforts, are taken away where they could be diversion or housing locators, or anything else that will get people into housing and not just expand the shelters.
Okay. You're the only one I'm going to let do, do it twice. I made you. Is everybody else, is everybody else, okay. On this, rapid rehousing, of course, I think that, as Councilmember Rogers said, we probably need to continue to look at what we can do at Sam Jones Hall. I don't think that we've made a decision at, at the council level yet to reform how we're taking care of the caseload at, at Sam Jones. I understand that there are a lot of people per staff member out there, but until we make some, some bigger decisions, I think that if there's a possibility of housing more people, or sheltering more people out there, that we should pursue that at this point. So those are the two that have my interest here. And I just want to thank, first of all, everybody for hanging in with us here tonight. There are a lot of people in this community who want to help. As Mr. Springer said, there are a lot of people who are helping. And frankly, sometimes I wonder if we've got a handle on, on all the things that are going on. And even before tonight, the discussion about, you know, whether we want to continue the homeless emergency, that, that was a question that was on my mind. I asked tonight for a report from the, from the collective, not just because of the summit that was held last week, but also because with all of the people who are helping, with all of the organizations who are involved, I sometimes wonder who's, who's the dog and who's the tail? And, you know, who's, who's wagging who? You know, we've got a, a subcommittee of the council, we've got the council, we've got the board of supervisors, we've got the homeless collective, we've got the continuum of care, and, and apparently now we have Ian working with this, with us too. And it's, I think it's confusing to the public, it gets confusing for me. So we're now sitting here tonight talking about changing the focus of what we've been doing over the last seven or eight months. Or if not the focus, at least changing tactics and strategy and redeploying resources. And I think that we need to bring all this back together and figure out what that focus is, what that, what those strategies are, and which ones we're going to be choosing, because we still seem to have some, some disconnect up here on the council. And for that reason, I'm going to be scheduling, I will be looking for a place on the calendar in the next mini-week, seven, probably, you know, seven, probably in the next two months, given everything else that we have in front of us. But I think we, we need to revisit whether we need to, to continue the, the homeless emergency. I think we need to revisit whether we need to have a homeless subcommittee of the council. You know, this council talks about this once a month right now, and I still don't feel like all of us are necessarily on the same page. So I don't know what the cause of that is. I don't know whether doing away with the subcommittee and dealing with things as a council would repair that, but I want to have that conversation. I want to have a conversation about where do we go from here? We've, I, I think that as a staff, as an organization, and as a community, we've done a good job, we've done a lot in the last seven months. I think that some of that is not visible to the community, some of it is. But I would like to take a deep breath and have us all talk about what we're doing and where we're going. So expect to see that coming soon. With that, I think we've got a motion on the table and a second, and then we have the vote. Seven ayes. Thank you very much. I think that does it. We don't have any cards for a final public comment, and this meeting is adjourned.